Good evening, let's call to order the November tenth meeting of the Raymore City Council. Ms. Hill, will you call the roll?
Mayor Protem Abdalgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Barber, absent. Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Serko.
Present.
Councilmember Inger.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Mills, absent. Mayor Turnbull, absent.
All right, if everyone will join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no presentations or awards or personal appearances tonight, so we'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would ask Mr. Gress to make a report for Development Services.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem and council, in your packet tonight was a monthly report for the month of October. A couple of things to highlight, we issued twenty-three new single-family home building permits across the Madison Valley, Wood Creek of the Good Ranch, Eastbrook and Cunningham subdivisions. So that brings our total for the calendar year permit-wise up to one forty-seven. And then last month, we did in the fiscal year, and we ended that with a hundred and eighty permits. So another strong year of home construction in the city. A couple of items related to upcoming meetings I wanted to draw to your attention. We had a couple of Good Neighbor meetings in the month of October, one of which was for a proposed rezoning, property located at ten twelve South Madison Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on that at their last meeting on November fourth. The applicant there is requesting to rezone their property from R-one Single Family to RE Rural Estate. The city council will see that item and hold a public hearing at their first reading on November twenty-fourth. So here in a couple of weeks in front of you all. The second item would be, we did have a chance to hold our builder and developer open house. We shared our residential design standards with you all here a couple of weeks ago at a work session. And so we had about twenty-five folks here in this room last week to kind of share what staff has worked on. And we're working on gathering as much feedback as we can between now and a future work session, I think coming up, so that we can share some of that information with you all, and then get some direction on how to proceed forward with that, with that work. And then lastly, we also held a Good Neighbor meeting last week for another proposed rezoning, which is down towards the interchange there at North Cass Parkway. Generally located Track Twelve of the Good Ranch, which is right across Dean Avenue from the Raymore Commerce Center North. A developer there is requesting to rezone that from agricultural, which is the current zoning designation, to a planned business park for the purposes of a federal wreckage storage facility. And so the Good Neighbor meeting was just last week. The Planning and Zoning Commission will review this at their next meeting on the eighteenth, and then the city council will see this item in front of them at both of their meetings in December. So a couple of items coming through the process up to you all. That will conclude my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, David. Any questions for Mr. Gress? If not, Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, Mr. Gress. I would call on Chief Wilson to make a report for the Police Department.
Good evening, council. We're going to give an update on the Public Safety Sales Tax hiring. We have, since April, the PD and Human Resources have been testing, interviewing, conducting CBSAs, background, drug screen, and all the other stuff that goes along with hiring folks. We've made four conditional offers to individuals that do not have a post license. We've hired one individual that has a post license. While, and we just started the detective process. During this time, we've also just finished up the lieutenant process and started a sergeant's process. During all that, suddenly, we had a community outreach, a school youth community outreach officer position open up, so we started that process, completed that. Well, Ms. Stephanie Hornbeck, she's going to go home and do a more difficult job of a stay-home mother. And Officer Parker Pruitt is now the new school community youth officer. As you can tell by looking at my face, the department is gearing up with Christmas shopping with kids. The November event kicks off with the department members donating funds that are utilized for the kids, but those funds are, so we can grow a beard. The date is December seventeenth at six p.m. And additional information will follow up here soon with a few more details. And that's my staff report for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for chief? Yes, Mr. Holman?
Chief, I know it doesn't always play in with the schedule, but since these will be the first officers hired under the new Public Safety Sales Tax, I know we can't necessarily do their swearing-in during a city council meeting, but maybe a repeat, or at least an introduction to us and the community in front of the city council at a future session after they're hired, if that works out. I know I would welcome it.
I think that we'll be able to do the one individual with the post license, and then we'll gather everybody if we can. Once they get into the academy, their time out of the academy is very limited, and that's based upon the post requirements, so they can't miss time. But we'll try to work something out for sure.
Understood. I think it would just be, nothing else ceremoniously to have those officers here after this, the, our citizenry certainly recognize the value of having those individuals and continuing the strong tradition of public safety that we have here. I think it would be just nice to do, if possible.
Yes, sir.
Nothing else, Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, chief. I would ask Mr. Salisbury to make a report off-agenda for the Public Horse Department and draw your attention to the sheets we handed out that are in front of you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fearborn. As he stated, there is a copy of the memo at each one of your seats. This is kind of just a follow-up from the comments several weeks ago about the weeds between the curbs and the streets. We explored several different options from weed-eating and spraying the weeds to what we settled on was a street sweeper that comes with a brush-removal wheel, basically, or a weed-removal wheel, and it can sit up on top of the curb and grinds off the weeds. We received that piece of equipment on October twenty-seventh. We had it for, were expecting to have it for about a week. It was pretty slow-going because there were quite a few weeds. We were getting three to five miles a day there for the first couple of days. After he got trained up a little bit more, we were doing about ten miles a day. It was pretty slow, though. Due to a scheduling conflict with the rental company, we did get to keep it for a second week for free, which was very nice of them. During that time, we completed all of Zone Three. We completed fifty-eight highway and then a few select areas in Zone One. We could probably finish up the rest of the city on the Priority One routes in the next month or so. We feel this was, excuse me, this was a successful program, or at least a start to one. We would recommend probably trying to do this at least once a year for three to four weeks. I also included that we would probably explore the potential for a lease option if, based on the cost. It was about thirty-eight hundred dollars a week, so that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? If not, Mr. Fearborn?
The council will probably see this again. Mr. Salisbury has indicated, one of the reasons it was slow-going is, obviously, we've never done anything with these weeds before, so they were in control of the, of the program this time. We'll go get them. Hopefully, if we can do it, maybe even if I can convince Mr. Salisbury to get this up to three times a season, the weeds would always be knocked down. We wouldn't be fighting so much and going so slow to be a quicker process. We think we have a solution, though, to this problem, which has been longstanding.
Thank you.
I would ask Ms. Hill to make a report for the City Clerk's Office.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. First, I would like to introduce Catherine Allegra. She is the deputy city clerk. She joined our team in early July. She will be joining us for council meetings for the foreseeable future. So if I have to not be here, she will be able to fill in for me. A second, we have the general municipal election for the city of Raymore. For the offices of city council will be held on April seventh, two thousand and twenty-six. Candidate filing for this election will open on Tuesday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, at eight a.m. and continues through five p.m. on December thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five. A twenty-dollar filing fee is required at the time the candidate declares candidacy. All four wards will elect one candidate to serve a two-year term. The Ward One seat is currently held by Brian Mills. Ward Two is currently held by Thomas Serko. Ward Three is currently held by Jay Holman. And the Ward Four seat is currently held by Sonya Abdalgawad. City Hall is open for filing eight a.m. to five p.m., Monday through Friday, with the exception of December twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-five. The notice to the public for candidate filing will be posted on November twentieth and published in the North Cass Herald in their November twenty, twenty-seven, and December fourth publications. These public notice dates are in compliance with the Missouri state statutes. For any questions or additional information, you can contact the City Clerk's Office or visit the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Did want to address a couple of the items here that the chief brought up. When he's talking about the Public Safety Sales Tax, I am pleased to report that today, we received the first revenues associated with that tax. It was actually one check from the state of Missouri for thirteen thousand dollars. Can't say, can't identify the source of this particular one, but it's good to see that the revenue associated with the expenses we're about to incur is starting to come in, so we have the balance that we need on that. The work session next week, Mr. Gress had brought up that we did have this very good meeting with the builders and developers on the non-monotony and development standards for residential housing. We will be actually bringing that to you all next Monday night, the results of that particular meeting and recommendations for future actions to take place with that. That concludes staff reports tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Fearborn? If not, we will move on to, we have no committee reports, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to dispose of the consent agenda, including Item A, the city council meeting minutes for October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five?
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Holman.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented to include the city council meeting minutes from the meeting of October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Do we have a second? Mr. Burke?
May I second?
Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? That motion passes unanimously. Next up, unfinished business. Will the city clerk please read Bill thirty-nine ninety-one by title only?
The second reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-one by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending provisions of Chapter one thirty of the Raymore Code of Ordinances to adjust the operation, management, and allowable fees of the municipal court.
Thank you, ma'am. If there are no further questions, do we have a motion to dispose of this item?
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Holman.
I move that we approve Bill thirty-nine ninety-one, amendment of Chapter one thirty Code of Ordinances for the municipal court.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve this bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Can we have the reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-seven by title only, please?
The second reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-seven by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving the Raymore Commerce Center South First Final Platte, a subdivision of land in Raymore Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, do we have a motion to dispose of this item?
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Holman.
I move that we approve Bill thirty-nine ninety-seven, the Raymore Commerce Center South First Final Platte.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I will second.
Mr. Burke, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? That motion passes unanimously. That concludes our unfinished business, so now we'll move on to new business. Can we have the first reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-eight by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-eight by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with TSI Global Companies LLC for the purchase and installation of an AV system for the multipurpose rooms located at the Raymore Activity Center in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-five cents, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. Can we have a staff report?
Thank you. I would ask Systems Administrator Luke Swetner to make an agenda item report.
Good evening, members of the council. Tonight before you is a proposed award of contract for the installation of audiovisual equipment in the multipurpose rooms located at the Raymore Activity Center. We have received two bids for this project, and after reviewing both proposals, we have determined that the proposal from TSI Global Companies LLC represents the lowest and best option. The goal of this project is to install televisions and speakers in the rooms along with the control system that will allow the audio and video in the rooms to operate independently in a split state or to be combined to accommodate larger events. This project also includes the installation of acoustic paneling, which will help reduce echo and improve the overall sound quality in the rooms. Staff recommends reward of contract to TSI Global Companies LLC. That concludes my staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none? Anything further from staff?
That concludes staff report.
Thank you, sir. If there are no further questions, is there a motion to dispose of Bill thirty-nine ninety-eight?
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Holman.
I move that we approve Bill thirty-nine ninety-eight, award of contract for the Activity Center audio and video system installation.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to Item B. Can we have the first reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-nine by title only, please?
First reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-nine by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving an agreement with the Mid-America Regional Council Solid Waste Management District relating to the regional household hazardous waste program.
Thank you. May we have the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would ask Mr. Salisbury to make a report on this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fearborn. Tonight before you is the agreement with Mark for the household hazardous waste disposal event we do every year. The amount this year is twenty-nine thousand, five ninety-six, sixty-eight, which represents a dollar fourteen per capita. That is an increase of one cent from last contract. I'm not sure where that is, but that is the increase. We are going to continue to share this event with Belton, and the event will be held in Belton this year, sometime in the summer, as usual. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Doesn't look like it. Anything further on this?
That concludes staff report.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to dispose of Bill thirty-nine ninety-nine?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Madam Protem, I would move that we approve Bill thirty-nine ninety-nine, the hazardous household waste agreement with the Mid-America Regional Council's Solid Waste Management District.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Is there any discussion? Very quiet tonight. If not, no discussion? We have a motion and a second? All those in favor? That passes unanimously as well. We'll move on to Item C. May we have the first reading of Bill four thousand by title only?
The first reading of Bill four thousand by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Will Pave, Inc., for the full-depth reconstruction of multiple segments of Lake Crest Circle, Lake Ridge Lane, and Vista Cove, City Project Number twenty-five dash four seventy-six, in the amount of five hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. May we have a staff report?
Mayor Protem, I am honored tonight. I was honored to be hired by the council with Bill three thousand. So I am honored tonight to be able to present pretty close to the thousands ordinance for approval and consideration by this council. And I would ask Mr. Salisbury to make a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Tonight before you is the award of contract for the Edgewater Third Road repairs in the amount of five hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. This project will repair thirty-three hundred square yards of road in the Edgewater Third Platte area. This will, this will target all of the significantly failed areas. Included in that will be some under-drain, curb replacement, trying to keep the water from getting out under the road. We've worked with several different companies to try and find a permanent solution to this, and we feel confident that it will fix the, the issue. We received five bids. Will Pave was the lowest and best bidder, and we recommend award of the contract in the amount of five hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we know the underlying reason for this? And do we anticipate other areas in that part of town with the same problem?
There's a significant amount of groundwater under that road, and so when we identified that, we also included in the project under-drain, basically French drain that'll pipe into the storm inlets. So we anticipate that'll take care of this issue. We haven't seen this issue anywhere else in town to this extent, but we do feel confident our solution will work.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to dispose of Bill four thousand?
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Holman.
I, too, am honored to move that we approve Bill four thousand, the award of contract for the Edgewater Third Road repairs.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Discussion, a question perhaps, from Mr. Salisbury. What we're seeing here is, or what we've seen here, rather, is what other locations have seen as close as, say, St. Louis, which are much larger in scale, am I correct? These are, this is what causes sinkholes.
To a certain extent, yes. The subgrade under the road is really the issue. It's, it's, it's like soup, so it's hard to build a road on soup. So by the process we're going to use, we're going to dig it out. We're going to replace it with a lot of rock and keep the water from getting underneath there. It should be a lot drier, and it should be a better product.
My, my point being, and being, living in a state that's built on limestone, it's actually a little bit surprising we don't see this more often. It's unfortunate, and it's expensive, but at least we're staying ahead of it. Would you agree, sir? Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve this bill. We have a motion. Sorry. I'm behind. And if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Very good. That motion passes unanimously. Item D, may we have the first reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-four?
The first reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-four by titled only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the Raymore Municipal Code, Chapter two sixty, Tree Maintenance and Care.
Thank you. Can we have a staff report?
Thank you. I would ask Mr. Mustine to make a staff report on this item.
Thank you, sir. Tonight before you is Amendment to Chapter two sixty, which is the establishment of a tree board for the city of Raymore. For many years, all the way back to, I believe, two thousand and eleven, the tree board was functioning as an advisory board to the city staff to maintain our Tree City USA status and just general tree practices. What we've seen over the years is our long-term members, one has moved away, one has become terminally ill, and we have seen in the smaller communities that this particular board functions well under an advisory board of the Park Board as a subcommittee. And so it is our recommendation, and also the recommendation of the Park Board, to amend this code to establish that tree board as a subcommittee of the Park Board. This will also allow us to do more funding and projects within the Park Board's budget, which was difficult to do as two separate boards. So that is what is before you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, anything further?
That concludes staff report.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to dispose of this bill? Bill thirty-nine ninety-four?
Madam Mayor Protem, yes. I move that we approve Bill thirty-nine ninety-four, the tree board amendment to Chapter two sixty, Tree Maintenance and Care.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor? That motion passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Staff is going to request of the council that Bill thirty-nine ninety-five, the next item on your agenda, be pulled. We were contacted by the company that we were going to be recommending contracting with this afternoon with a couple of questions on the contract that they had not contacted us on before. It was enough to make us uneasy bringing something before you all that may go into discussion later. Item is easily pulled, and staff would request that at this time.
Thank you. So do we need a motion to remove it from the agenda?
No.
I think you're just going to be looking for a motion to pull it completely. I'm getting information from staff that they are looking to do a, not table at this time. You just simply want to, would draw it from the agenda.
Right.
There you go. So a motion to pull it from the agenda.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to remove this item from our agenda.
Madam Mayor Protem, I move that we remove Bill thirty-nine ninety-five from consideration due to unforeseen circumstances.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Very good. Any questions or discussion on that? All right. All those in favor of removing Bill thirty-nine ninety-five from the agenda? That is approved. So that will bring us to our last item in new business. Can we have the first reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-six, please?
The first reading of Bill thirty-nine ninety-six by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing a contract with J and M Displays in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars to provide pyrotechnic services.
Thank you. Can we have the staff report?
Thank you. I would ask Mr. Mustine to make a staff report on this item.
Thank you, sir. Tonight before you is the recommended contract with J and M Displays. This is for our annual Spirit of America fireworks display. You'll note on this particular contract for the first year, which would be two thousand and twenty-six, the date has changed to July third with an increased budget to accommodate the two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration of America, as discussed by the council in previous work sessions, and funded through the fiscal twenty-six budget. This contract is also as typical with our fireworks contract. It's a one-year contract with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms. Should we choose to do that, those terms would fall back to our typical budget of twenty-five thousand dollars at this time. Obviously, we can make any changes year, year to year, but this is a one-year contract for forty-five thousand for July third next year, with the option to renew back to our normal dates and back to our normal budget the following years. This has been through the Park Board with a unanimous vote, and it's before the council now. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Baker?
Couple here. First, I saw that the rain date is July fourth. I know with that being the, just the two-hundred-and-fifty celebration weekend, we had something potentially planned for Saturday. If there was indeed rain on the third, would we just have a fireworks show? Because I thought we were doing something at, at maybe the amphitheater or something on Saturday.
The item on July fourth is on Saturday morning.
Okay. Yep, okay.
Very good. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you. Well, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill thirty-nine ninety-six.
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Holman.
I move that we approve Bill thirty-nine ninety-six, award of contract for the Spirit of America fireworks display.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. That concludes our new business. And so we'll move on to public comments. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak, please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, we will move on to mayor and council communication. We'll start at this end with Mr. Baker.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. First, the Marines turned two fifty today, two hundred and fifty years old, so I'd like to wish the Marines a happy birthday to one of the finest fighting forces we have in America. And then tomorrow is Veterans Day, so everyone who's a veteran in Raymore and in the metro or wherever, just like to say appreciation for what you do, have done. You are the backbone of our free society, and we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Serko?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Kind of slide off on my colleague next to me on his comments. Yeah, congratulations. Uh, yeah, congratulations to the Marines. I'm an Army guy, but I'll bite my lip and say, "Happy birthday to the Marines." It is their birthday. But when we talk about tomorrow, about Veterans Day, uh, as a veteran, it is very important. Our country, remember the veterans, all wars. And remember that, uh, when our servicemen and women are fighting for us, they're not fighting for the day, they're fighting for the future. When people say, "Thank you for your service," I say, "I did it for you." Sometimes younger people look at me kind of puzzled. I say, "Remember, when we've, when I've served and fought, I fought for the future generations." Everyone who serves now is fighting for the future generations of America to be free. So we're always doing that. That's what we do. We don't fight for the time we're there, we're fighting for the future. We got to sustain what we have to make sure we keep it into the years to come in America. So basically, that's why we do serve. But to the veterans and stuff, right, thank them for their services. When you see them, do something with them, give them coffee. I stop by if I see them in a quick step, uh, quick trip, so I buy their stuff for them. I'm just trying to be kind to all the military. But if you served during a Vietnam campaign like I did, all you want, if you see someone with a Vietnam cap hat on, instead of saying, "Uh, thank you for your service," say two words. It'll make them just be happy and delighted. Just say, "Welcome home." Welcome home to a Vietnam vet is 10 times more than you could ever think for them to hear that. Even 50-plus years later, you tell a Vietnam veteran, "Welcome home." You'll make their day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Circo. Mr. Burke?
Thank you. Um, I wasn't expecting to go next. Um, first off, I wanted to thank, uh, a couple of our constituents. Levon and Patricia had a home visit with them last week and was looking at some issues with their street. And, uh, I, I, I went and looked at their street beforehand, and then I didn't really understand what the issue was until we actually stood there and looked. And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, I totally see it now." And, and we couldn't, I don't think I would have understood it without being there. Um, and something, secondly, um, I wanted to recognize one in individual, uh, one veteran in particular, uh, that I worked with, uh, for the, worked with him at, uh, he was a teacher at Raypack, passed away last week, Derek Gray. He, uh, did his student teaching. When I went to college and, uh, you know, worked on becoming a teacher, he went to war, went to Desert Storm. And, uh, then when he was done with that, he used that bill to come in and be a teacher. And I remember when he was a student teacher, um, and he went through his whole career. I remember, um, you know, the year I was retiring, he came up to me, he goes, "Oh, I got one more year." I'm so, you know, I'm so jealous. You're so lucky. And he didn't even make it an entire semester of, uh, of retirement before he passed away. So, um, I know there's a ton of Raypack, uh, people out there that, that know him and love him. Uh, he's a coach, and, um, anyway, he'll be missed. Thanks.
Sorry for your loss. Mr. Holman?
Thank you. A couple of items. One, uh, well done tonight, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and the absence of his honor of the mayor. Um, it's always tough when you get called out of the bullpen and you haven't been up in the chair for a while, right? Keep the cadence moving, but well handled tonight. Uh, the other thing is, is tonight should be, and I'm going to make it a night to honor our city staff. Um, seeing staff handle things, do the things that we expect them to do, right? We call 911, the police show up, and they take care of business. We report a pothole, and they go out and they fill it. Turn on the water, and the tap comes out, and the water's clean and clear. But staff has been evolving under Mr. Fearborn's leadership for a number of years, but we've heard some exceptional examples tonight of how they go above and beyond, how they are, um, problem solvers and how they are community-minded. I'd like to just give a couple of examples. Um, Mr. Gress, the meeting with the builders and developers, I was impressed when you said that. I was shocked when you told me you had 25 people there. I mean, we would have difficulty getting that many people just from the general public in a city of 25,000. Um, so I'm really glad we were asking for input from those people, and I'm glad that they showed up, and we're going to get some good feedback out of that. So excellent, in addition to the, uh, public meetings that you had this past week. Great progress, excellent work. Um, really impressed, Mr. Salisbury, with your report on the, what will soon be our new weed program. I really didn't know what to expect when, um, the Madam Mayor Pro Tem brought that up as an issue, especially on the south end with the weeds. I'd seen it, hadn't really thought about it. Um, but excellent. Sounds like we've got a solution. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that private companies live for, right? It's when your people can go out and take charge of something and find a solution and fix it, and we can apply it right away. And then police involvement, chief, um, talked about No Shave November, and then that leads into Shop With A Cop, which is direct community involvement with the children and their parents every single year. The program gets more involved, and there are more people there. Sonya has donated a lot of time with that. And so just across the board. Mr. Fearborn, uh, you'll have staff meeting tomorrow. I'm not sure that's the proper term. Management team meeting, correct?
Management team meeting, sir.
Please express my appreciation for the fantastic work